Welcome. Okay, welcome everyone. This is Kristin Ferguson, Chair of the Concord Planning Board, calling to order our meeting of January 26, 2021 at 7:02 PM. In accordance with Mass General Law, we are holding this meeting virtually and the meeting is being recorded. There will be time for public comment today. You'll get a chance to raise your hand and then ask to be unmuted. So we'll let you know about that. And on tonight's agenda, we're starting out with a exciting and we're very much looking forward to this discussion about affordable housing. And we thank all of the groups that are coming together for this. So we're going to start out with a discussion about affordable housing. And we will move on to discussing our bylaw amendments for 2021 town meeting. And also, that also promises to be a very exciting and lively discussion concluded with the less lively minutes discussion at the end. So I see that we have lots of folks on from a variety of committees on affordable housing. And we're going to hear from you. We're going to have questions for you, I hope. But we're really looking forward to this discussion because people come to us. And I will take role. Sorry, Elizabeth, I'll do that. But people come to us because they want to see what zoning can do to encourage more affordable housing. And I think we acknowledge it's a much larger issue than that. So we want to hear everything that's kind of being done and then work our role in that as well. So let me start by taking a role for the planning board members. If you just unmute and say that when you're here, Ms. Orbital.
Here.
Mr. Bozdet.
Here.
Ms. Miller.
Here.
Mr. Flint.
Here.
I don't see Mr. Sayah, but are you on the line? How about Ms. McInee? Or the last two? Okay. All right. So Elizabeth, I don't know if you're sharing your screen or passing it to anyone else. Or if you would like to introduce our guests, but thanks, everybody for coming.
So I have nothing to share, but I think what I'd probably ask is, so Elizabeth Rust is also on the call. She's the Director for the Regional Housing Services Office. And I think she would be a better person to do the introductions. And maybe start off with what the Regional Housing Services Office is doing. And then move into the other members from the Concord Housing Authority, the Concord Housing Foundation and the Concord Housing Development Corporation. Is that correct? Okay.
Yes, thank you, Elizabeth. Hi, I'm Liz Rust. And I'm glad to be here. I'm the Director of the Regional Housing Services Office. And so I'm here to really support the affordable housing efforts in Concord. So I work on what everyone else is working on mostly. And I think I would highlight the Economic Development Bill that just recently passed. It has a number of items that are relevant to the planning board and affordable housing efforts. These will need further exploration and regulation and details that are forthcoming. But there is the change in the threshold of zoning for town meeting from two thirds to a majority. And that's really for housing related items. There's also a provision for as of right, housing in transit development areas. And it's not a requirement, but if you are using mass works funding or housing choice funding or other kinds of funding sources, this would be required. And there's also some changes for accessory dwelling units. So I know those are all things that really factor into the planning board, you know, landscape, and you probably are aware of some of those with the Economic Development Bill. And as I say, there are more details forthcoming, but just wanted to highlight that to you. And then maybe I guess we'll go through the different groups, as Elizabeth said, and people talk about, you know, introduce themselves and who's here from their committees and boards and sort of take it from there. And maybe let's start with you, Lee.
Hi, I'm Lee Smith, I'm the Chair of CHDC Concord Housing Development Corporation. And with me is my colleague on the board Doug Bacon. And we are happy to be invited and participate in your discussions. I have to apologize in advance. I've actually got a work call that came up. Starts around 7:30, so I'm going to have to jump off, but Doug and Liz can report back.
And then maybe the Housing Authority, I think I see Rick Eifler here. Is that right?
Charles Phillips.
Charles, yes, of course.
Now, I'm a new member of the now new member of the Housing Authority. So I'm here on Housing Authority's behalf.
Thanks. So do we meet everybody that's on the line from the different committees?
I think the Concord Housing Foundation, Frank is here. I think you're unmuted.
Trying to. There we go. Yes, I'm here for the Concord Housing Foundation. I succeeded, Charles, just a couple of weeks ago as President.
Right. I do see people here from the League of Women Voters and the Select Board. And then some, just, I don't know if other people have committee affiliations. But I think from the three housing groups, I think that you've met the people here that, at least that's what I see.
Great. Well, thanks for joining us. Now, when you were invited, did we give you any kind of direction? Or did we just say, come, and we're going to ask you all kinds of questions?
The direction was to have them just tell the board what are some of the things that they're working on, working towards? And whether there were any opportunities or items that they thought the planning board could help advance or look into for them. So that was, that was the board's original goal.
And I think also you offered to maybe brief the groups a little bit on the Thoreau Depot project and what's going on there.
Great. So I can give you a little bit about the Thoreau Business District. That is a project that we had a grant through MAPC to help do some research into, we did some preferences with the, with the public. And we're really trying to identify kind of what zoning changes might allow us to enhance that area and make that, that transit oriented development. Knowing that there's kind of the Thoreau Street, and then there's also kind of the Crosses area, kind of two adjacent, but somewhat distinct business districts. And so we've really been aided by Chris at MAPC, who has kind of taken what we've heard from the public, taken some of our feedback, but he's largely worked on his own to try to, you know, further our understanding of what possibilities are at each step of the way. And so, you know, basically, we're really hoping to maximize that area in terms of the usefulness to the residents of town, the safety for the residents of town, promoting more mixed use of the residential and commercial buildings. And then also redesigning it when it's redeveloped into more pedestrian and bicycle friendly. So that we're really having safer intersections and safer, more, you know, walkable areas there. So we had a couple of hearings or forums with the public where we kind of got input on, you know, potential designs. What did you think of this look versus that look? That he then kind of channeled into some design guidelines for us to consider. And then, you know, based on kind of our input there, he talked about potential ways to structure new bylaws that would affect this area. And that's essentially, I think where we are is we're going to kind of take a look at what he's come up with. He's coming back again in February in anticipation of making any changes at a perhaps special town meeting in the fall. So we're not prepared to move anything at this town meeting in June yet. But we want to make sure that we, you know, thoroughly consider all the, you know, potential bylaws and how we can really improve this area. And, and also kind of hear from, make sure we're hearing from residents and, you know, property owners in that area as well. We haven't heard very much from property owners there yet. So Elizabeth, am I leaving anything out or planning board members? Go ahead, Burton.
Kristin, I would just mention that one of the things that he's proposing as ideas is modifying the amount of affordable housing that would be required for smaller projects. So that, and Elizabeth, maybe you can, you can fill in the details here. But when you're talking about developing a smaller site that might have, say, six units or fewer, that instead of requiring, Elizabeth, what would that work out to be?
Currently, it's 20%.
20%. So that gets you at six units. That's two units, right? I think. And so consider, consider alternative either percentages there for smaller projects or different, you know, mechanisms in terms of maybe funding, providing funds that could be used elsewhere.
Thanks, Burton. Yeah, that's an important part is, you know, in some of the different projects that we've considered, whether it's been reservation of affordable housing or, you know, whether we should be entertaining, you know, these, these payments in lieu of affordable housing. We'd really like to hear from these groups about how, how effective those, that is in terms of moving the larger goals of the town forward.
You know, there's so many ways to, first of all, to calculate the cash in lieu amounts. So we've done some research on that that I can forward to Elizabeth if you wanted to, you know, sort of investigate that part. And I know that, that their funding is always welcome because affordable housing is so expensive to build. So on the local level. Also, that, you know, there was a, the town meeting some couple of years ago where a significant sum of money was offered or units, and the town chose units. So, so there was a pretty strong preference to, to, to go for the units versus the funding. So sometimes it just depends on the project, I suppose. And, but having the availability for a cash in lieu, you know, is something that's, that would be good to see, you know? As I say, because funding is scarce and there's a lot of pressure on CPA, which is really the only funding source. Though there's been, you know, the last two years through town meeting, significant, you know, free cash appropriations. But I don't know if that can be counted on.
So from a, from a planning board perspective, we're, we're often faced with the dilemma of, you know, how, how can we have more affordable housing in town? And it's pretty tough based on kind of what we, what our purview is in terms of, we've been trying to do things by looking at square footage and seeing what we can do to incentivize smaller homes. I wouldn't call those more affordable, but at least on a, on a dollar per square foot, or I should say total dollar amount, they should be less than the total dollar amount of a larger home. And we advocate for that, you know, based on that, and also for reasons of sustainability and also kind of a smaller footprint. But it's really kind of been a bit of a, definitely a bit of a stumbling block for us here because we're not clear kind of what mechanisms we have at our disposal to encourage more affordable housing or to, you know, or to do what we can to, like I said, raise those funds or things like that. Right now, I think we have a provision in our PRD and we have an affordable and inclusionary housing section in the subdivision rules and regulations. And so we, we work very hard to make sure that we, you know, uphold those aspects. But beyond that, are there, are there other things that we should be looking at that would better support kind of what needs to take place, knowing how expensive housing is to construct here? You know, what else can we be doing? And now would be a great time to hear a little bit about kind of what the work that the committees are doing as well.
I just want to say, put one plug in before turning it over. For the moderate income units that are permitted through the board, there's always interest in, in getting to a lower income level. You know, the 150% AMI is just a very high number. But pushing that towards 120, 120 would really be the kind of industry standard for the top end of moderate and then pushing down from there. So I know that the 80% are sometimes difficult for the developers when there's only like one or two, you know, units in a development. But, you know, getting to the 100, 120% versus the 150 kind of range. And that's always appreciated. And I know that's a project by project negotiation that you do as you go forward, but.
You're talking about for who qualifies for the affordable housing in that project?
So when you, when you issue your permits and you, developers providing affordable housing and the AMI is negotiated through your board? Does that make sense?
Yeah, I think Liz is talking about the affordable housing requirements in the PRD section specifically has low income, which is at 80%. They call them starter homes. And then they have moderate income that goes up to 150%, which, what does, what does that equate to as far as a price?
It's upwards of $500,000.
Yeah, so.
Like Mill, I think Mill Run had a, had 150% AMI plus an 80.
So that may be something to think about in the future is, you know, when the PRD passed, when that section was, provision was first put in, you know, 150,000, 150% AMI might have been around 350,000. But now, now it's, so that might be something that the board wants to do, you know, a check on. And, you know, look to see if that might be something to investigate and change.
Is that written into our conditions that where that's negotiated and specified?
So usually it's, so currently, if, if a PRD comes through and they only are required to provide one affordable unit, it has to be at 80%. And then after that, the developer can, you know, present a project that says, okay, this one's at 80. And then, you know, this is a small, you know, a small project. So we want to just have this be at 150% and not like at 110%. So it is a project by project basis, but the initial, I'm going to say, proposal comes from the developer.
Thanks.
And I think, I think it is written into your decisions.
Oh, it does become a condition of approval. Yes.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that newer members kind of knew where, where to look for that and things like that. Well, great. Do the other members of the planning board have questions that they'd like to hear answered from the other members that are present? Or do you just kind of want to hear about the projects that are being worked on so far?
I have any questions? Yeah, I'd definitely like to hear some of the other projects that are being worked on.
So why don't we, um, Lee go first since he's got to leave in 10 minutes?
Actually closer to five, so I'll tell you briefly. So CHDC, it's a nonprofit corporation that was established under authority of special legislation that was put forward by the Select Board. So we've got some independence in that we're not a true town board, but we do work very closely with the Select Board and other boards and committees in town. And also, I guess, follow the lead of the Select Board in many instances. Our biggest project ongoing right now is Junction Village, also known as Christopher Heights. That's an 83 unit affordable assisted living facility that has all its approvals now and is just, the developer is just waiting to get final approval for his funding. So we're hoping that will break ground within next year. Hopefully sooner. So that's basically done from the perspective of CHDC. Another example of a recent project was the acquisition of a single family home on Main Street, where we were able to work directly with the landowner who wanted to offer it for sale at a below market price to benefit affordable housing in the town. So that was unusual, that, that does not happen very often. And even with that, we had to rely upon generous donations of the Concord Housing Foundation and, and other, other town funds to make that happen. We then, after we acquired it, we transferred the title to Habitat for Humanity. And they're going to turn what was a single family into a duplex. So that's our other big project at the moment. As far as looking forward, we're looking, our charter is to create and preserve affordable housing around town. So we essentially look for opportunities that may arise from time to time. For example, next to 930 Main Street, there's some state land in between the house and Route 2 that we're looking into whether that might be surplus by the state and that, that potentially could be suitable for further development for affordable housing. But in general, we kind of stand at the ready, keep our ears open. We've got more flexibility than the town does per se. And that, as long as we've got the money on hand, we don't have to seek town meeting approval to acquire property or engage in real estate transactions.
Thanks.
Can I just ask a quick question?
Yes.
Curiously, like in general, for your organization, are you short on funds or just short on opportunities? Which one is more often the challenge?
Probably both. You know, the opportunities are, at least since I've been involved, relatively rare. The, we've been fortunate through CPA appropriations and other town meeting appropriations to not have lost any opportunities in the past few years. We've got enough funds on hand. But at the moment, we don't have a lot of money on hand.
Another question, have you found in your development of projects that there are any existing zoning requirements that add to the expense of the development that perhaps could be relaxed for affordable housing? Or are there any ways that you've thought that zoning might be more supportive of affordable housing?
Um, Liz or Elizabeth, did we, did we need any zoning relief for the Habitat for Humanity project?
No, it was a special permit through the PRD section. Because it was Habitat, both units are at 80%. And so there's a provision in the PRD bylaw that allows a waiver of many of the other requirements of the PRD for a for-profit developer. So, no, it was, it was a fairly, fairly simple process. I think there's, there's other things in town, you know, as, as far as, you know, whether it's permitting fees or sewer hookup fees. Or, I mean, there's, there's still an expense that, you know, is outside of, you know, the realm of what the planning board can control. But as far as zoning for that particular example, no, it was, it was actually, I think it went through in one meeting with the planning board and one meeting with the Board of Appeals. So it was a fairly good project.
And, and the Junction Village project was a 40B. So they had a more flexibility in that sense. Liz, you've been around longer than me. Can you think of any other projects?
I can. And I know you have to go, so you feel free to, to.
All right. You'll take over for me?
Yeah.
Thanks, everybody. I'm sorry I have to go.
Yep, yep. I saw that. He's presenting to the Sudbury Board of Selectmen, which I was helping them with this afternoon. So I think that Lee really covered those. I mean, 40B is still a good zoning tool, like in the event that you have a project that, that needs that kind of relief. And so, so that that's still would be relied on in situations that, you know, the zoning that's in town isn't, you know? Yeah. I mean, maybe the Housing Authority has some perspective on, you know, they also do some development. And see, what, you know, maybe Charles, if you had any input on that.
Yeah. Well, first of all, the Housing Authority is, has a different model, which is, most of you know, I'm sure that, that the Housing Authority owns a number of properties and then rents to seniors and family housing, families of qualified income levels. The, and that, at the present time, the, the only project there in terms of expansion is the house on Commonwealth, the planned house on Commonwealth Avenue, which was part of the Jero land purchase. So that is coming along. It's, I mean, it's, it's, it's slow to get started, partly because of the, of the planning of park itself, which needs to be clear. But I think, I believe, from what I know about it, I'm very new to the Housing Authority, but that, you know, the funds are available to construct a house for, for one, one family. I think with the thing that, the other thing I want to say, from a point of view of the Housing Authority is that a recently large apartment development or condo development would be a good thing for the Housing Authority because of the fact that it, that it will be, make the possibility of, create the possibility of, of buying a housing unit at, you know, with required affordable units being available, causing authority buying the unit and then renting it at their, to their qualified applicants. So that's why from, I think from the point of view of the authority that, that a, for example, a relatively large condo development at, at the Thoreau Street area would be, would be a good thing. And in particular, the other thing I want to mention is that, is the fact that, that it's been contemplated by, in the study to have a 15% affordable requirement for sufficiently large developments. And I think it's certainly a good thing for everybody involved in affordable housing. And the other, the other area that I want to always keep, keep, keep people in mind is sometime a few, few years from now, the Congress School Department will no longer, will have a new school operating at, a new middle school operating at the San Francisco location. And that they will no longer need the PBD school or, or the land that it's built on, which is owned by the town. So, you know, I guess, I think all of us are saying, in the housing community are saying, we've got to hold on to that property and build a housing development there. It's just, you know, it's all set up. And when, and there are not many properties that you, that we own, not many pieces of land that we own that are suitable for building housing on. And there again, the authority would be, would be involved in, potentially in obtaining a below market condo in such a, such a unit. So that's kind of what I wanted to say.
Thank you. Two, two things. One, Ms. McInee, forgive me, I know you came in right after seven. So let me just acknowledge that you are here. And the second thing is just to make sure that, that we, the planning board members are clear. Because this was kind of the first time that some of the members on our board did this. that we, uh, the planning board members are clear, because this was kind of the first time that some of the members on our board did this. But in a recent approval of a subdivision, dependent subdivision, we reserved, um, three properties, uh, for potential, uh, purchase uh, by the town for, um, for affordable housing. And so if, if, uh, the town approved those, that purchase, which organization would own that property? I'm just, just curious for our own kind of newer people.
I could say that, um, the logical entity would be the Concord Housing Development Corporation, um, because it is set up for that and is not, um, has some independence from the town that makes it, uh, more cost effective to, uh, to, to do. You know, presumably development would be required there, um, and to, to go through that process. Um, but there would be, I think by the time that happens, there's, will be an affordable housing trust, um, which is not quite as, um, as independent in terms of holding land. Um, it's a much more, it's a much more, uh, suited for a funding organization. Um, but so that would be one of the, you know, it's certainly a larger discussion of how that would happen. But, um, you know, the, the Concord Housing Development Corporation is set up for that and can then work towards the town goals for whatever's envisioned for those lots.
And so Elizabeth Hughes, does, does that get worked out before that, um, we would decide to propose that to town meeting? We'd figure out, you know, where the, where the money would be, where we would be asking people to appropriate the money. Just, I'm just trying to think about um, how, how all the organizations function together. So if planning board says, okay, we have, you know, followed the bylaw and we have reserved these lots, um, is it clear? Would another organization kind of take that before town meeting?
Yes, it would be through the select board.
Okay.
Um, so there would be extensive conversations before an actual warrant article is drafted. Um, and it, it could be, you know, drafted in, in many different ways to exercise the right and then, um, you know, to transfer or even, you know, exercise the right and transfer the, you know, acquisition of it to the housing foundation or, so there's lots of different options um, for that to happen. And, and those conversations would happen before a warrant article is, um, is drafted.
Okay. Um, other, uh, planning board folks, what, what questions you have? This is kind of, it's, it's really good to have all these folks on the line. So I want to make sure that we, you know, ask our questions, um, and, and really kind of get to know what's going on and, and what we can do to support it.
Um, I think the housing foundation is here and can maybe, um, you know, update the group while you're thinking of additional questions or topics if you wanted.
Sure. Thank you, Liz. Um, basically we're a five oh one C three. We try to use our flexibility as a nonprofit to do what we can to find the two things you need for affordable housing, land and money. And as some of you know, we were, uh, we pressed hard to see that the house that was lost on the Juro property was replaced. We contributed some of the money to the nine thirty Main Street House that Liz talked about, uh, earlier. Uh, we are active in a statewide coalition of housing and community development groups, uh, lobbying for the transfer fee, uh, to fund affordable housing. As you know, we passed that, we need a home rule. There is also, there are about five other towns that have passed um, local ordinances, but there is and will be this year, uh, hopefully with a greater chance of success, a statewide authorizing bill. So we're working on that. And at the same time, we're trying to keep our eye out, as Charles said, for other places when land becomes available. Uh, the school property is one, Star Med is another. And the lots at the fourteen forty Main Street development are an ideal place if we had money going into the Affordable Housing Trust to buy that land, uh, and then CHDC or the Housing Authority Development. I would also note that it would be nice if we could get, uh, the zoning uh, bylaw change that would make that a two-unit as of right uh, site, because it's within walking distance of the station. And it would be perfect to put in some smaller duplexes on those three lots and get six houses out of whatever we have to pay as the market value of those lots. But fundamentally, our job, as I see it, is to find opportunities to acquire land or housing. The one other thing we're active with now are active discussions with the National Park to see, could we help them in any way to rehab and make habitable some of their historic structures where people, particularly farmers, who can't afford to buy a house in Concord, even if they're farming land, uh, would be able to live. So those are all kinds of things that I think you can do with a small nonprofit that support that town's general affordable housing goals. And that's what we're trying to do. Any questions?
Uh, you mentioned the home rule petition. Can you walk us through the process and timing on that? And, and then the effect if, if that goes through?
Well, um, and I should defer to Linda Escobedo as well and the select board or Matt. Um, but, um, it has been filed each year, uh, by our rep Gueva and by Senator Barrett. Um, the transfer fee concept is strongly opposed by the realtors and the real estate industry, not just in Concord, but statewide. Uh, I expect the home rules will be reintroduced this year. But as I say, we're hoping to get a statewide authorizing bill where any town within certain limits, uh, could create a transfer fee for affordable housing.
I see.
Um, and so we could go either way. We were hoping at the last moment, maybe we might get, um, a home rule petition, but that didn't happen. Um, but I'm assuming, and again, I defer to the select board, that that will automatically be filed again. If we get the home rule, then we need, I believe, one more vote at town meeting and then a vote, uh, in the general town electorate. Is that correct?
Uh, yes, that is correct. It's, sorry, Susan Bates from Select Board. That will be filed again, um, in this session. So fingers crossed.
Okay. Thank you, Susan.
I think there's also a building permit surcharge. Isn't that right, Frank? Too? That has, it's on a different
Yes, that, uh, that is also pending. Last term, that got through the Senate and then got tied up in the House. Uh, that is, uh, the, uh, Charles Phillips actually started that about three years ago. Um, and again, we need, um, we need home rule approval to do it. I assume that will be filed again, more or less automatically. And we'll have to see if we do any better this time. I mean, with COVID, quite apart from the industry opposition, um, it was, it was not a very easy legislative session last time. So maybe we'll have better luck this year. But we're starting now with the, uh, Transfer Fee Coalition organizing, trying to get additional groups involved. I'm hopeful that we can get some of the healthcare providers to speak out on the issue now that it's become so apparent that overcrowded housing has been one of the risk factors with COVID. So, um, yeah, uh, we're working on that.
I think Frank brought up the, the question of, um, the duplex zoning for those lots. Could, could the planning board talk to that a little bit and help explain and educate the group?
Yep. And Elizabeth, I, I, I'm sure you can do this better, but my understanding is that, uh, in our subdivision rules and regulation in that, I think specifically in the inclusionary housing part, we said that you can build no more than one unit, um, on the ten thousand square foot. And then, um, by right. So that was, that was written into that. So when we looked at the, you know, lots that we could reserve for a recent subdivision, we also were con- contending with some natural features, um, that we were trying to, you know, select good lots. And I think there was one unit we reserved that is greater than ten thousand square feet, right? But the other ones, I think
There's one unit that's about twenty-two thousand square feet. So you can put a duplex on that lot.
Um, but, but we are, so that, that's speaking to kind of the recent, you know, what the limitation was with the, with the recent subdivision, um, that came to us. We do want to, and, and it's on our, our docket to update our rules and regulations. They're, you know, a, a bit overdue in terms of updating them. And it's certainly one of the things that we want to look at, um, is, you know, do we have the, uh, best provisions in there for affordable housing? We, we don't want to handicap ourselves um, with the lots. Elizabeth, if you want to add any more, any other board members as well to, to clarify the recent project or what our plans would be.
Um, so I, um, I don't need to clarify the recent project. That's, you know, um, the, the section, the inclusionary, um, provision that's in the subdivision rules and regs, um, was specifically added after the town adopted an inclusionary housing bylaw. And it is a standalone bylaw. It's not part of the zoning. Um, it's a standalone general bylaw, uh, that did pass, um, was approved by the Attorney General and then incorporated into the subdivision rules and regs. So if, um, that is something that the board wants to, um, look into amending, you would have to first, uh, go to town meeting, amend the inclusionary housing bylaw, and then the planning board would have to hold a public hearing to amend the subdivision rules and regs. So it would be a two-step process.
Thank you.
Um, I, I would be interested in hearing if there are questions from the public. So I'll open it up for public comment, but I want to make sure that all the uh, planning board members have been able to ask their questions or vice versa. If there are other questions, um, for the planning board, uh, we want to make sure we are able to answer those for you while we're all together. Haley?
Yeah, um, this isn't really zoning related, but I just was curious, um, even to the point of thinking longer term about, you know, the, what will be the former middle school building and, and land, um,
Haley, sorry to interrupt. Speak, yeah, move close to your microphone.
Um, yeah, so sorry, this isn't zoning related, but just wanted to, um, ask, I guess, in thinking about like bigger ticket um, opportunities down the road, for example, the, what will be the former middle school and, um, just was curious if, you know, any of these folks on the phone have had, um, interaction with mass development. I, I just happen to follow them on LinkedIn. And so I see their headlines from time to time. And I saw that they had done a pretty big tax exempt bond, um, on behalf of a Somerville, um, the Somerville Community Corp, um, for affordable housing, you know, efforts. And was just thinking as, you know, this is again, not zoning, but more of a finance lens, I guess, but just wondering if you guys, if anybody has, you know, thought about using them for, for bigger, you know, to get affordable housing things in Concord in the future.
I mean, I guess I could say that when any project would come forward, um, in the very early stages, I think uh, mass development and other public funding sources would be, uh, you know, actively pursued. Um, but you have, you, you sort of have to start with one particular, you know, project or concept or, or land or, or something. Um, but very much so. Yeah. Uh, as you know, that the Junction Village project has many public sources of funding. So that's just kind of one example of the kinds of, uh, public subsidies that can be brought forward when there is something, a project of some size.
Yeah. I mean, even, you know, in the context of the Main Street development and the three lots or so, I mean, it's smaller overall. But yeah, I just was curious how far in advance you guys start to think about, okay, well, where, where are we going to get the money?
Yeah, I think in the long term, if we can get the transfer fee, which has the potential to generate a million or two million a year, then I think one could look, for instance, at the middle school site and say, what about mixed income housing with the town using that kind of money to buy down a bunch of units to make them affordable in a mixed income kind of development? Because I'm sure there'd be pressure also to try and realize some money to offset the bond issue that's going to be required for building the school. So that's why I think it's extremely important for us to get a regular source of income going into the Affordable Housing Trust. I mean, for all the housing agencies.
And all those public subsidies require, um, they're all very competitive funds and require local contribution. So you'll always need local money.
Thanks. Um, well, let me, let me open it up for public comment. I believe you can raise your hand. When I call on you, we're going to ask you to unmute yourself and then you can state your name and address for the record. And then we'll, um, we'll hear your comment. So I see Adam Emfield.
Hello. So, um, so my name is Adam Emfield. I live at one one six Conan Street. Um, so first of all, just a, a thank you to everyone on the board here. Um, affordable housing is one of the things that I like to brag about the town actually caring about and making an effort to, to make better. And, and it's, it's something I'm proud of and I appreciate. Um, but I have a question for the board. Um, right now, the house we live in, we are renting. Um, our owner has, uh, chosen to sell this house and a few that are near us as well. Um, and, um, and everything about what's going to happen is, is hearsay, and I don't want to engage in rumors or whatnot, but, but I do fear that, um, given that we live in an area of town with a lot of homes that are close to the half million dollar range, um, where houses are affordable for those who may not qualify for traditional affordable housing, um, but who can afford to move into town for starter homes with, with young families and, and things like that. Um, I fear that, uh, if a bunch of these homes get torn down and replaced with, um, larger developments, that we'll end up with this disparity where there's affordable housing for those who truly need it and, and deserve it and can get it. But also a set of, um, homes or condos that may be out of reach for those people who can afford closer to the, you know, the lower end of, of what homes cost here in Concord. So my question, I guess, for, for the board is, um, are there, are there things being taken into account that will help make sure that, um, those who make too much for the traditional affordable housing, um, grants and, and, and things to be able to move into homes like that? Um, but you don't make enough to buy the homes that are greater than the, the median home price for Middlesex County, where you can get a mortgage at, you know, seven hundred fifteen thousand or so with five percent down. Um, is, is there anything ta- being taken into account that will help those of us in that, that little gap there to be able to stay in Concord and, and be able to afford our, our first homes here, um, that we can, can stay in without, uh, and being priced out of the town?
Uh, thank you. First, my working or not?
Kristen, Kristen.
Yeah. I, I might need to move. How about now?
I can make some general comments. Uh, Chris and your connectivity seems to be hung up. Um, but Adam, it's a great question. And I think we've, we've talked a lot about it because that's, that's something that in many different planning and long-range planning, uh, sessions for the long-range planning committee came up as, as, uh, a, a problem, sort of the missing middle housing, right? Um, the folks that, that are, would not qualify for, uh, the income restricted properties, but nonetheless are, are priced out of a town like Concord. And I think we've talked about different, um, so, so not price support, uh, measures, but, but, uh, encouraging alternative housing development, uh, styles, which like two-family housing, like, um, um, the, what we did last year, which was the, um, accessory dwelling units to allow, uh, people to downsize into a smaller, you know, a, a, an accessory, like dwelling unit connected around on their, on the property. Um, and, and ex- and expanding, um, where two-family houses can be built to allow for the, it to counter sort of McMansionization and allow for a smaller counter sort of McMansionization and allow for a smaller, more affordable housing style. So that's certainly been, been a big subject. And, and like I said, last year, we did the accessory dwelling unit that was aimed at that. And I think that we'd be looking, where, Elizabeth, where we've got two-family back on, on for this annual, annual town meeting. But we're always looking for things. It's a very hard problem to solve. Hey, Kristen, I don't know if you're back in? Or anybody else?
Yeah. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Kristen, I, I thought your explanation was, was good. And yeah, I second it. That is something that we always struggle with.
It's a hard problem, but, but thank you.
It is. No, and, and I think that we all need to keep bringing these issues back to the forefront. And, and that's why it's, it's a larger issue than just, than just the planning board. So we want to make sure that all of our efforts complement the other ones that are going on as well.
I think it is a hope that with the trust fund, we might buy some of these houses before they're torn down and fix them up and sell on the smaller units. Whether there's still a gap there between, and potentially subsidizing them somewhat. Whether there's still a, a sort of free market piece there that we can't subsidize, but, you know, would otherwise become the million dollar home, I don't know. But it's been my hope at least that with money in the Affordable Trust Fund, could buy some of these units, upgrade them, and then sell them for, you know, for want of a better term, you know, worker housing. But I mean, workers in this context includes young doctors and, and nurses at Emerson, not just what we might classically think of as workers.
Thanks. I see a couple more hands up. Pamela Dritt, thanks for stating your, your name and address for the record.
Hi Pamela Dritt, 13 Concord Green Unit 4. Thank you all. I was wondering if there's a way to shift people's thinking about the requirements for making affordable housing to encourage all-electric net zero building for them as well, since particularly for new developments on like public land. I, I know we can't require, but surely we could economically encourage it since it doesn't cost as much as it did even one or two years ago. And with all-electric net zero building, it's better for the people who live in them as well as the rest of us. I, I think we should discourage the exemption of affordable housing from any kind of environmental restrictions because it doesn't make more affordable housing built. The same number is going to get built anyway. And if we can encourage that kind of building, then it will be desirable in the future. And not like a second-class place of living. Is there a way we can do that?
Thank you. I mean, I know we're looking into some, some green zoning in ways to incentivize. And as you're saying, we have to make sure that when we incentivize for some things, we don't compromise other important priorities. So we will continue to look into that. I think that's a near-term issue, but definitely, you know, in the next, you know, two to three years, so we can, you know, actively work on that.
Yeah, I was concerned when I heard that we'd like to have the development like this, but except of course for the affordable housing, which we shouldn't require, particularly in the land behind the prison that is being built for seniors. The owner of that building is going to really pay off to build it all-electric net zero. And I don't think they're even considering that. I mean, it's wasting money not to. Can we get them to?
That, are you talking about on the Jarrow land?
The, behind the prison, the land that-
Junction Village, I think you're talking about.
Yeah.
They're building senior housing, assisted living?
Yeah, Junction Village.
I, I mean, I don't, I don't believe that's a, some, the all-electric is still not something that the, that our bylaws can require. But from a, from a bylaw perspective, we're looking at, at other ways that we can incentivize development so that it does encourage developers to do that. We can't right now require any developers to do, to, to do all electric developments yet. But we are going to, you know, continue to work from a planning board perspective. We're going to continue to, you know, march toward sustainable measures. What can we do to make sure that our bylaws are, are supporting our, the long-range goals and our, and our movement towards sustainability? And concurrently, it, it is going to get more advantageous for developers, you know, to make environmentally friendly and energy efficient homes. We, we certainly hope that the two of those things complement each other.
Yeah, if those developers would realize it, which they typically don't.
That, that we, we cannot control unfortunately, but, but I, I definitely hear you. Thank you, Ms. Dritt. Matthew Johnson, you have your hand up. Welcome back. Hold on, unmute yourself, please. State your name and address for the record. We still can't hear you yet.
Okay, now can you hear me?
Yes.
So Matt Johnson, 21 Withersgate Street, a member of the SLIC board, but speaking on my own behalf. And so I just thought that it would be an excellent time if you're going to bring the two-family bylaw to town meeting that, in tandem, sort of immediately afterwards, to amend the inclusionary zoning bylaw. The reason that I suggest that is that otherwise you could get into this ironic situation in which a developer in the future could create a subdivision. They could actually, as a result of them being conforming lots, could then propose to put, get special permits to put duplexes on them. But due to our inclusionary zoning restrictions, we could not reserve a lot and put an affordable unit on it that was a duplex. And so that, that's just too bad that, you know, you can do for, you know, market rate units as duplexes, but not affordable units. So I think we need to take care of that inconsistency and really make the inclusionary zoning more based upon the underlying zoning bylaw for lot size as opposed to putting in an arbitrary lot size limit.
Thank you. Elizabeth Hughes, how, how much do we need to look into that potential change to make sure we're avoiding any unintended consequences? Do you think that's a, and I know you're going to have to look into it more, but do you think that's a relatively straightforward change to the general bylaw?
I'd have to, I, one, I definitely would have to look into it. I don't think the, the, when you talk about unintended consequences, I don't think the general, the inclusionary housing bylaw is specific as far as zoning districts. So, um, yeah, I'd have to, I'd have to, I'd have to look at that in, in context with the two-family and residency zone district. And just, it just making sure that the, the wording of the two mean the same thing. So that, you know, you could do a two-family on 10,000 square feet in residency, just making sure that that bylaw amendment and zoning is accurately worded and reflected in the inclusionary housing bylaw. So that's just something I'd have to look into.
Yeah. And, and what I was suggesting is just remove those, that language from the inclusionary zoning so that it wouldn't create this inconsistency, I guess, going forward.
And, and if, if that's all that's needed, that's a very simple zoning bylaw amendment.
Thanks. Let's, um, we're, we're talking about, uh, bylaws right after this, you know, for town meeting. So let's, let's at least add that to the list so we don't lose that for research. Thanks, Matt. All right. I see no other hands up. Is there any other, any other questions from the planning board or from the folks on the, on the affordable housing side of things?
So you have one other person, Stephen Bader?
Stephen, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Stefan Bader, 7 River Street. Thank you all for this meeting. And my only comment or my only thought is I'm having a little bit of trouble keeping up with the changes to the suggestions for the requirements for the Thorough Depot area and balancing that with the latest version of the state's recently passed rules saying requiring multi-family development by right within a half a mile of a MBTA station. And so I guess my, my thought process is to say that if the, the previous discussions have talked about whether the restrictions will, if they're too onerous, if any affordable housing will be built at all. And I guess my sense is that if you keep the affordable housing restrictions more tight rather than looser, then you've got something to bargain with when a developer comes forward and says, you know, I really don't want to put in three units in my 15-unit development. And you could then say, well, okay, you can do two units if the whole development is all electric or something like that. And so maybe you can negotiate some of the terms that you can't set outright within the law or within the, the bylaw. That's just a sort of philosophical approach that I wanted to share.
Thank you. All right. Well, thank you to everyone for being on the call tonight. This is, this is not a problem that is going to be solved overnight, but it's been great to see how much has happened in the affordable housing world since the passing of those, those bylaws for the funding sources. Was that a couple of years ago, two or three years ago? So I know there's, you, you need a lot more funding. And we at the planning board would like to make sure that, you know, as you're doing things, if, if there's ways that we can support it, that we continue to, to hear from you so we can work on that. All right. So thank you, everyone. I will, you're welcome to stay on, or you, you're welcome to excuse yourself and enjoy the rest of your evening. We're going to talk a little bit about the five or six bylaws that we are, bylaw amendments that we're preparing for town meeting. And they include, as we talked about, we are proposing two-family in Resident C, and that is something carried over. We didn't move last year. Elizabeth's going to have some updates for us on floodplain conservancy district or, and also the groundwater conservancy district. But we were also going to get a couple of updates on, two planning board members have been working kind of offline to do a little research. And we just wanted to kind of hear, you know, what type of things they're looking into so far so that we can give them any, any recommendations or guidance as they continue their research and bring things back. Elizabeth Hughes, any other information that you'd like to, to give us as we have this discussion? I think what we would talk about primarily is the earth removal bylaw and Ms. Orbital's kind of research so far. And then Ms. McAnaney, you can tell us a little bit about what you're thinking about in terms of your research for the FAR bylaw.
Sure. So I'll just give up my quick update. Met with Concord Public Works Engineering and the Natural Resources Director on the floodplain conservancy bylaw. We now have a draft of all the amendments. We have probably maybe half a dozen outstanding questions for the state floodplain coordinator. And so I'll be sending an email to her. In a conversation I had with her, she said she'd be happy to review our proposed bylaw amendments before we have to, you know, submit the warrant. So I'll be sending that to her to get those, you know, half a dozen questions answered. And so hopefully at your next, you know, well, two weeks away, either your, your first meeting or your second meeting in February, we'll have the final draft warrant article for the board to review. The groundwater conservancy district, been speaking back and forth by email with the public works director and his team at the water sewer division. Haven't seen any proposed bylaw amendments yet as far as what they'd like to see. So still not sure how that's gonna, how that's going to move forward. But hopefully we'll, we'll have something for your meetings in February from them to review. The tree preservation bylaw, almost done with that warrant, our proposed warrant article. It's fairly simple for the changes that the reviewing agent suggested for the bylaw. There's a couple of outstanding questions that, you know, as far as direction on how the board wants to handle. One of the reviewing agent identified was, and, and this was a lengthy conversation with the tree preservation subcommittee when drafting the bylaw is dealing with trees that are just off the property on the abutter's lot and really what is in the town's, you know, or the town's purview to require, you know, a developer to also protect a tree that's not, you know, on that lot. So there's a couple of outstanding questions that the board may need, have to get town councils input when they review the warrant articles before they get submitted. And so I think, and then I'll look into the inclusionary housing bylaw. If we have time tonight, we can, you know, I can bring it up and the board can look at that if they want tonight or just wait for the next meeting. But pretty much for your next, all of your next meetings, from now to the time the warrant closes, bylaw amendments will be on your agenda for some form of discussion. Am I forgetting any? Any others?
No, that's, that's all you had to do.
Okay.
Thank you. Haley, do you want to tell us a little bit about kind of what, what you found so far looking into the earth removal bylaw?
Sure. Um, so I think what Elizabeth sent out had a pretty good summary. I know she added hers and the one that she had in mind, number four. But, you know, I just-
Haley, do you want me to bring that document up?
Sure. Yeah.
Screen.
You know, I, I really just started to read, well, I started with reading our own bylaw for the first time. But then, you know, similar to what I did for PRDs last year, I just started to look at other towns and, and see how they were similar or not. And you know, I, I think there were two things, you know, the, the two key potential changes that I would suggest. And again, this is sort of unfiltered. Elizabeth hasn't given me any feedback on this yet or not. So I'm fully prepared for her to shoot any of this down, but for what it's worth, here's how I've thought about it anyways. Um, you know, number one, just noticing some of the consistent language in a number of other towns bylaw- Um, you know, number one, just noticing some of the consistent language in a number of other towns bylaw. And thinking about really how to account for town feedback, right, I mean, as we have seen in recent applications, a lot of times we feel like our hands are tied because an engineer somewhere has done a calculation that means something is feasible. And we're working within the confines of, of that rather than sort of listening to the sound, so to speak, on you know, what is impactful on them. And so this particular phrase is repeated in a number of bylaws on earth removal and, you know, Elizabeth, I'm not sure. I know there is some, some sort of a reference to welfare, I think in, in our own bylaw, but I don't know if it's the exact same or not, you know, you tell me, but you know, this, again, particular phrase, I don't know where it came from, but it's, it's identical in a lot of these, so it must have come from some overarching reference. But, you know, it's basically allowing denial of a permit based on, you know, if it is found that earth removal will endanger the general health, safety or welfare or constitute a public nuisance. And there is no, presumably, hopefully, no measure, engineering measure of what is a public nuisance, and I think that's the point. And so, you know, open for discussion with how folks feel about that, but to me, again, based on our own experiences recently or in this past year with applications, it seems like it would be useful to, you know, include something that is not simply an engineering calculation for whether or not it should, should be approved. So that's kind of number one. I don't know if we want to talk about that, or I can just go through the rest first.
Why don't you touch on the, on the other ones and then we'll come back if that's alright?
Okay. Um, yeah, and then number two, I think, you know, it's a bit related to the conversation we had a few weeks ago, which I think was, you know, Linda's point, and that, again, we're working within the confines of, you know, traditional engineering calculations. That, you know, a town engineer, whoever would do to traditionally use to measure, you know, how possible certain things are, and, and so how do we change that or, you know, update that to require some thinking around the environmental, an environmental benefit calculation of some sort as well, rather than just sort of the traditional source of calculations that might be done, and this particular language I found in, you know, it's, this is verbatim from, was it, if you scroll down, it's Sterling or Plymouth, I forget. Plymouth. And I just thought this was interesting that they had, you know, a requirement for alternative calculations to sort of force the developer to look at things in a different way, which we've all acknowledged is part of the problem, right? Like a developer wants to do something the way they want to do it, and, and the way they've always done it, and this I thought was interesting because, you know, Plymouth is saying, well, look at it from different ways and then tell us what you find, and, you know, it might not, the, the end result might not be any different, but at least it forces them to take the time to do it. And the suggested, you know, modification I had here was not only include cost, but, you know, environmental benefit comparison. And then number three, you know, honestly, I'm maybe it was just me, but I, I just found this particular section hard to digest as is, and really it's a clarifying question of my own, but I'm curious if anybody else, you know, just found it hard to follow the sort of logic of, of the way it's seven, five, three, two was written. So nothing new there, just really understanding what exactly it is we're trying to understand with what is enhanced or, you know, what that sentence actually means. Yeah, oh, number four, I don't know, I think you added that, maybe Elizabeth? Or maybe that was Kirk, Kristen's suggestion?
Comment from Kristen.
Yeah, that was, that was my suggestion in terms of kind of at least framing our discussion, but also kind of in thinking about why we might want to change the, the bylaws, really think about kind of the purpose of it. And I don't believe we have that in the, in the bylaw right now, and I think it just might help the ZBA when they evaluate things to think about the context within which they're evaluating. And so that, that one right there is just right from Sterling's, I didn't, I didn't do too much of the research, but just to think about that. You know, it, it does have to do with the health, health, safety and welfare of the public and that kind of speaks to the point that Haley was bringing up about, well, how can we account for that in, in, when the ZBA kind of evaluates this? Well, I appreciate you kind of pulling together those things, doing this research and finding kind of the other references. Let's hear from some of the other board members, our, our goal would be to give Elizabeth some guidance to incorporate any changes into a draft bylaw of our, of our current bylaw and whatever changes we might want to make that might, if, if these are points that we want to add, I want to have that discussion and then give her some guidance on how to do that. And the other thing is that we were also going to use the word fill, so not just earth removal, but also fill, because that was going to also dramatically change the landscape. But let's hear from other board members about questions for what Haley has found right now or discussion, and Elizabeth, I don't know, you might have to put that back up so we can reference it.
One question, Kristen, have we heard from the ZBA that they are, they've, you know, there, there have been issues in applying the, the bylaw as written?
Good question.
So there actually have not been that many special permits because most projects look to balance cut and fill on the, onsite. So if you're, if you're balancing cut and fill on the site, then there's no removal, you know, there's no fill being brought off the site. Or, you know, if we change it, there's no fill being brought into the site, so. So there have not been very many. And the, the few that have, I, that have been, since I've been back are, are very minor.
Okay. But we nonetheless, I mean, you know, we're taking a look at this because we think that there's some, some language that could be clarified.
Some language that can be clarified, but, you know, also it's, you know, it's not just cut, so I'm not sure why this was originally you know, just proposed as a bylaw for earth removal and you know, you have, if you're removing 10,000 square, you know, cubic yards of earth, you have the same impacts as if you were bringing in 10,000 cubic yards of fill, so. So that was the, you know, original thought, but then I think the points that Haley has brought up are are definitely things that would help clarify the bylaw, but also clarify it in such a way that it gives the board something to evaluate it instead of, you know, here's my request, you know, just, this is what I want now. The provisions that she's identified in those other bylaws, which to answer Haley's question, the one thing that all town planners do is, the goal is to work smarter, not harder. And when you see one town has the same bylaws as another town, most likely it's because one town wrote it first and everybody said, wow, that's great, and it passed the attorney general, so let's just, you know, let's just copy some of that language, so that's usually how a lot of bylaws get started and perpetuated. But I think providing that mechanism to have a comparison evaluation helps, you know, this board or even in Board of Appeals to make more informed reviews and decisions.
I would also, I mean, speculate that you know, there are fewer and fewer parcels and they're likely smaller and smaller that developers will be targeting going forward, so while it probably hasn't been a big issue in the past, just because of, you know, the, the nature of what's left in town to be developed, like I could expect that earth removal, you know, might become a bigger, you know, a more common need from developers.
And Kate, you had a, you had a comment?
Thank you, Haley, and I also, and thank you, Elizabeth, for suggesting that we add fill. Sorry, the, there's, um, when we were talking about the zoning subdivision bylaw and we were trying to figure out looking at the language, what constituted in, in that regulation, what constituted a nuisance or a danger of public health or whatever it was. And it was clear that it couldn't just be anything, but I'm just wondering how do we figure out here if we're brought, if we're brought, if we're making just with the language in terms of general welfare nuisance, whatever it was, how do we know whether, how much discretion is really giving the ZBA versus whether they're penned in by other restrictions in terms of what, what can constitute a public nuisance or what needs to be? What evidence do you need such that it's a public nuisance? So I just, I'm curious to know how to, how that works.
Yeah, I'm, I think that would probably be one of the questions that the board would definitely get town councils input on as far as I'm, I'm, I'm sure public nuisance has been defined. And is that definition that's out there, you know, whether it's through the courts or through the attorney general, you know, is that the direction that the town wants this bylaw to go, so I think that's, I think it's a great question and you know, sometimes putting, you know, more requirements in a bylaw doesn't necessarily make the bylaw any easier, so I think that's a good caution to look into when you have those kind of general statements, but I'm, I'm fairly certain public nuisance has been defined in some manner, but general welfare, again, that's, that is, that's more of an ambiguous term and, you know, town council may have a suggestion for a better term than, you know, general welfare, because you also have to remember, you know, zoning bylaws, you know, evolve every year and so does the table, you know, they, they evolve as, you know, case, you know, the courts, you know, decide on things, so like, you know, currently, you know, the town of Concord has, I think, seven limited business districts. Like the one on Walden Street, it's a one parcel district, I can tell you that that would never be approved by the attorney general now, even though it was approved back then, so even, even bylaws through the attorney general and the courts do somewhat evolve, so. But if, if you get it passed before, if you don't completely have a warrant article that says completely delete and completely delete a section and, you know, amend it to approve a new section, then the attorney general can only review what is being amended and not the whole bylaw again, so. So that is a good question, that's something that the board will have to get councils input on.
And Elizabeth, I guess as I was putting this together, one thing I, you know, honestly was wondering your, what your take would be on this is that seven, five, three, three of the existing bylaw it says that if, if the board finds that affecting the removal will not be detrimental or injurious to abutters or the neighborhood, da, 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 um, so like, you know, I don't in some ways I felt like it, that, you know, what I am suggesting is similar but not identical to that, but to me, seven, five, three, three was in the same neighborhood of, of a concept, I guess.
I, I agree, it is, you know, somewhat more of an ambiguous term and you know, to Burton's point, I, I don't think in recent years, you know, let's say ten, fifteen years, there has been a project where it elevated to something of that level, you know, if it's 2,000 cubic yards of earth being removed, you know, or 10,000 cubic yards, I the projects that the Board of Appeals has reviewed now, I don't think has, you know, gotten to a level of you know, public nuisance, you know, we're talking about a couple of days. So I, I do think that will be something that will have to be looked at and, you know, discussed, and again, maybe there's a better way to word that statement of when it's, you know, it's just a couple of days compared to, you know, a month of something, so where, you know, is there a better, you know, description of when something gets elevated to being, you know, a public nuisance or you know, that's.
I mean, to, you know, to Kate's same point, though, like, what's the definition of detrimental? You know, we're gonna, even with the existing bylaw, I guess there's still some definitional you know, gaps in our understanding anyways.
Definitely.
And Nathan, you had a, another point?
I just want to say first, Haley, thank you for putting that together and Kristen and Elizabeth, your notes on there. I wanted the, I think it was the second point, the one we've talked about before, which was having like an alternative layout requirement, and I'm just wondering, how, how would that be structured in a way that would incentivize a developer to, to do that in a good faith way, because you could, if you just say an alternative, they can give you anything and just say, yeah, this, this isn't feasible for us financially or for whatever reason, and we, our preference is to do this and we can do it by right and we want that review. So, I mean, I'm all for like, let's try and get a way to have them thinking sort of differently than how they would normally do things, I just, I'm worried that if we just say as a, as a process that they need to submit an alternative layout, then, you know, the easy way out is plop a single family home in the exact same place, say, this is it, but we don't want to do this, thank you very much, and move along. And so I, I just, I'm wondering, you know, how do we put language in there that gives that some sort of, some sort of traction with developers?
Well, I mean, based on, I mean, I'd be curious to get Plymouth, somebody at Plymouth, their experience with it, but, you know, the, the, the language here leaves the discretion of the board to say, and, and/or the consulting engineer like, no, try again, if they're legitimately not, you know, really putting any effort into it, and so though, you know, until the town is satisfied with the alternative, it sounds like, you know, they just get a denial.
Yeah, to your point, Nathan, it, it's not by right, so it is a, a special permit is discretionary. And if the Board of Appeals feels that they have not, you know, in, in your terms, provided this good faith you know, analysis and, and, and why something, you know, doesn't work or, you know, does work, you know, it's discretionary, it's, it's a special permit, so. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I mean, I guess a little bit further would be, well, yes, yeah, understanding what other towns have done who have implemented this would be helpful, just to sort of understand in their reviewing process, like how are they, how are they defining sort of what's legitimate and, and what is what they want to see and what that process looks like? I think would be helpful.
And, and I think it's, it is going to be helpful. And I think it might, we can kind of hopefully give you some direction and perhaps you can, you can mark up the existing bylaw and we can see what changes might look like. I think what we're, we're trying to get at is how do we incorporate, you know, public comment and, and the subjective evaluation of the planning board, which is kind of what we're, you know, asked to do. But how do we do that in a defensible way? So I'm thinking about how to incorporate those aspects of the bylaw that, that, you know, strengthen it and, and make it, you know, so that we have a, a better, better place in Concord as a result of a stronger bylaw.
So I just wanted to suggest a next step of soliciting comments from the ZBA members. We haven't done that already.
We haven't because we haven't kind of shown them anything yet in terms of changes. Were there any comments from this board about kind of what Haley proposed? I mean, I think Haley, we, we've got a few things. One, we can add fill. So where it says, you know, earth removal, we can put N fill. That's one change that we could see throughout and see how, how that goes. And then Haley, you kind of provided some, some strategic or specific suggestions. Did anybody have objections or support those three suggestions? That, because if we, if we are in agreement on those suggestions, then we could ask Elizabeth to kind of see how we might incorporate those in there if that's its own section she could look at, or if we have to make another change. But I wanted to make sure, and Elizabeth, do you mind putting them on your screen again, please?
Um, two questions, I guess. Elizabeth, did we get the ZBA's input on like the PRD changes last year? I'm just curious process wise if what Kate suggested is like a, a necessary step, not that we don't need their input, but, or wouldn't like their input, but I'm just curious how we did it with this in the past.
So it, it has depended on, you know, the type of zoning bylaw. I, I think that the past few years, since I've been back, there's definitely been more interaction and coordination between the planning board and the zoning board of appeals that was not there previously. So I definitely for something like this, I, I think the Board of Appeals would be, you know, very pleased to, you know, you know, get a, you know, a draft, you know, warrant article and provide feedback to the planning board before the warrant closes and, and I think going forward, that's, you know, that should be a standard, you know, process for any zoning bylaw that has, that brings in the zoning board of appeals.
Yeah, I just, I couldn't remember last year with the PRD specifically. Um, the other, I guess, just thought that I had on to talk about would be number three, I think, and just related to the existing language. You know, like it's, I said here, we have this other design considerations, which, you know, I think is, is great, but fairly vague, obviously. So I don't know. I, I don't know if Elizabeth, you have any history for where that came from or what that has tended to mean, but for me anyways, I just found myself wondering, well, can that include, you know, environmental considerations? Like what, what could it mean?
I, I have no knowledge of where the, this bylaw originated from. It was, boy, my first time in Concord, that was, so it was in 1999 and the bylaw had already been adopted. So, but I, I think to your point, you know, I'm not sure what other design considerations would be. I mean, your, the section is, you know, the plans submitted in connection with the removal are designed to minimize changes in existing contours to enhance and, you know, land use, drainage, road grading access. And I agree, I think other design considerations would be more appropriate to be, you know, other site considerations or other natural features. I think there's, I think there's better words than other design considerations. Because if, if there is some design element that is, makes the project better, a developer's already, is already going to include that. But if it's other, you know, natural, you know, natural features or, you know, site, environmental site features or something, I think that would be a more appropriate than number five.
So from a procedural standpoint, might we be able to have you, Elizabeth, you know, mark up some changes, propose changes to this, bring it back before this board, see if, you know, we've captured everything we want. And then what's the board, and we don't have a lot of meetings, keeping this in mind, believe it or not, between now and when the warrant closes. Take our changes, give that to the ZBA to get their feedback on. But then I think the final step would be to have town council review it. Would that all take place before the warrant closes?
That, that would be my, my preference. It's, again, it's only since I've been back and it's only been the last, you know, that usually town councils reviewing warrant articles after they get submitted and after the warrant closes. And I, I find that counterproductive or, or actually unproductive when it comes to zoning bylaw amendments. And so like right now, you know, you know, once we get the, you know, the floodplain bylaw taken care of, you know, I will submit that to the town manager with a request that town council, you know, review it now before the warrant closes. So anytime the board gets a draft warrant article done, you know, before the warrant closes, that, that will be my request to the town manager. It hasn't always happened, but that's my request.
So when it comes to something like other design considerations or, you know, public nuisance and things like that, I think we're, we're hoping to get feedback from town council with, in theory, with enough time to make any of those, my last minute word changes before. But, but that, that is predicated on the fact that we give feedback to Elizabeth so that she can help kind of get this in as final shape as possible. So other, are there other suggestions from the board about guiding Elizabeth for taking our existing bylaw and incorporating these ideas, whether they're in a, a new section or whether they're amending, you know, certain sections of this? Was there, was there anything that, that was proposed in this document that you don't think would improve the bylaw?
Well, I, I would say I just don't know. I don't know if it will or not. Um,
I just, I don't want to, I don't want to have her go in a direction and then say, you know, we don't want that. Well, we might not know until we see kind of what some proposed language is.
Yeah. I, I mean, I would, so we can look at other towns' bylaws and see that they're different. But I, I'm not sure I understand exactly the impact of changing this language. So I, I feel like I don't know how to weigh in. And I, I, so.
So, Kristen, let me just, I'll, just, I'll, I'll make these, these four changes, four, five, five changes. And just do a, you know, start to do a draft. So for the next meeting, so that the, you know, gives the board something, you know, in context to look at and, and maybe that will be helpful.
Great. Um, so for Linda's benefit or for anybody that, you know, is, is, is listening as well, the way that, that we are preparing for these warrant articles is that we, Elizabeth kind of prepares a draft. And she shows kind of, this is what we changed, this is what it was before, this is what we're proposing changes. But then we as the board have to, you know, painstakingly go through each, each of these warrant articles and make sure that the changes that we're recommending are correctly captured. And then also make sure that in, in doing so, the language is clear, anything that we've added, and then it doesn't necessarily change something else in the bylaw that we, or in another bylaw that we didn't realize. So over the next few weeks, we're going to be kind of reading and reading and rereading drafts and subsequent drafts of the articles until they're just the way that we want them. And then we submit them for the warrant article, but then we each will present one of these articles at town meeting and, and before that at a, at a public hearing. So there's, there's several steps, but it involves all of us, you know, carefully reading the, the proposed changes that we make. So any, any process questions or if I have left any steps out of that too, feel free to add.
The only thing I'll add is that when it comes to zoning bylaws, punctuation matters. So, you know, where you, you don't have an and, whether it's an and or an or that, that makes a difference. So, so just for everybody to remember that when you review, you review things.
I just, I didn't want to put Linda on the spot by saying that.
Quiet tonight, so that's fine.
No, we, we, we know we're, we're counting on your, your copy editing especially. Well, thanks. I think, I think that hopefully will be improved and, and we will hear back from the ZBA in, in terms of their, hopefully time and wise for their interpretation of it. So, excuse me. Kate, I know that you are in the process and it's a little bit longer term process of examining the effectiveness of, of FAR, FAR bylaw and kind of any potential changes. But do you want to tell us a little bit about what your process is? And then if anybody has any questions or comments or suggestions for Kate as she's kind of going through data, she's kind of pulling some, some things together to show us at a, at a next, an upcoming meeting. I, I just wanted to make sure we offered you any guidance that you are or are not looking for. So that, you know, when you get back, we don't say, oh, did you do this? And you'd be like, well, you should have asked me about that. So.
I'm definitely looking for guidance. And I, I think I, I see this as an iterative process. So we, we are looking at the issue of teardowns and mansionization, which is a, a long-term problem and one the town has been working on addressing or thinking about how to address for a long time. And the gentleman who commented earlier was about, you know, the, the starter homes in Concord disappearing was of course, spot on. So as we all know, the FAR, the new FAR bylaw was put into effect in 2016 and so it's 2021 now. So it's been five years. So it seems like a good time to look to see over the past five years, whether FARs have been, how they've been impacted by the new bylaw or, or what, what developers have been doing in town. So I am working on that. We do have the FARs calculated for 2016 to 2020. And I haven't gotten too much further than that in terms of seeing what we can see from the data. I, I'm not sure if this is a particularly data-driven exercise. Well, I guess we've all been with Elizabeth and Kristen and talking about, you know, what, what we could see from the data, but I think it's certainly worthwhile to, to work through it. So what I hope to do is, I do have time blocked off with Matt Johnson next week, so we can one-on-one and go through what we know so far. And Matt is, was the advocate of the 2016 bylaws to talk a little bit about his experience with that. So what I hope to do is at a, hopefully in a meeting in February is kind of present to you all what I found and also talk a little bit about the history of the town's efforts to address this issue. Why we care about the issue, what the universe of potential tools are to address it. And kind of how we, how we might adjudge, how we might assess whether we've been more or less effective in, in trying to do something about it. So that's what I plan to do in February. I, just for, I, I, and, and I was just trying to look at the language of this goal, because this is one of our goals for this year was to look at the FAR. And, and I, I think it is to, I think of this as primarily looking at the effectiveness of the FAR and thinking about this mansionization issue. Potentially by the end of this spring, I think of us as having maybe arrived at a recommendation. I, I, I'm having trouble conceptualizing that we would be ready to move something for this warrant article. It just is too big and too complex. But so I'm thinking of it as this spring, we kind of try to move this forward and try to, if we, if we're going to advocate to do something, we take, you know, the next year to get it lined up for approval next year. But, but I, I'm sorry to be kind of throwing that out without giving the presentation that I aim to give, but that's the way I'm thinking of it. So I'd love anyone's suggestions. And I just, sorry, I'm just going through my notes. Oh, and part of that is I want to think about the incentives to go to tie FAR into electric and net zero green zoning stuff.
Thank you. Um, questions for Kate or suggestions? Things you want her to, to kind of come to the next meeting with if she can?
I have a, I have a, I guess I have a kind of a request. And Kristen, you've brought this up on numerous occasions of a desire to be able to look at older, smaller buildings and compare their energy usage with much larger and potentially more energy efficient newer buildings. So that we can compare how they measure up from an energy use perspective. I was wondering if anyone had any, wanted to take that on as a task in terms of figuring out, you know, if houses built in 1950 and it's 1,800 square feet, you know, on average, what the energy uses compared to a 5,000 square foot house that's built in. With the energy code of.
I don't know. I, I don't think we're going to be able to have data on that. But when I've asked like the, you know, I feel like we've asked sustainability director and, and comprehensive sustainable energy committee about kind of, you know, is this possible? And like, and CMLP obviously has aggregate data. And so one thing we could do is we could look at perhaps electric use over time, but there's so many, you know, and then, and then compare that to, you know, average square footage and, and see if there's any rise in that. But there's so many other variables, like more people switching to all electric or not all electric, but more people using electric heat and things like that. So I, although I would like to do that, I don't know that we have data enough to, to be able to correlate the two. I, I mean, I can, I can talk to Kate Hanley or something to see if there is some sort of data that we, we might be able to obtain and, and, or the comprehensive sustainable energy committee. I mean, they really are working hard on, on, somebody, somebody might be muted. And they really are working hard on having everybody, you know, be more efficient and weatherizing their homes and, and really contributing to, you know, a decrease in overall electrical usage or energy usage and using energy, you know, efficiently. And so obviously they would be very interested in that. So yeah, let me, let me talk to, you know, anybody on that committee and Kate Hanley to see if there's any other data that can, that we could also use in, in terms of, you know, evaluating the effects of larger homes in town.
Okay, thanks.
So, um, Kristen, let me. So Kristen, let me all send an email to who I think might be the best person at CMLP. And if Kate, if you have, I think it would be fairly simple, let's say smaller homes in. I mean, you want enough data. So let's say a smaller home that was torn down in 2017 and a much larger home built. I bet you if I just have those addresses and the three ranges, they could give me that energy use information. So.
Okay. Yeah, I can. I'll give you some addresses.
Oh, well, if if you can do that, that would be exciting. I know. But anyway, that's that's I just just to kind of have another way to look at things as well.
Sure.
Kate, when you say you're you've calculated the the FARs, you know, for all that, are you saying that you have all of the permits for all of the projects that have gone on, right? Or all the ones that have asked for special permits, special permits?
No, we've and I've had some help from the building department and and Elizabeth as facilitator. But we took the with the gross square living area of the house, added the garage on and compared that to the area of the lot, which is how you get the FAR. So we didn't, it's not just nonconforming lots. It's anyone who got a building permit, which you would need, obviously. And then, and I think for PRDs, Elizabeth, we're not going to use that data. Obviously. Okay.
Great. So you went through all the building permits is what you're saying, right?
Well, so this is for new homes. So if for new homes or if a house was demolished and a new house was built. So it does not cover, let's say, you know,
expansions.
Well, somebody's addition unless we do have some of the special permit data for those that are expanding, need a special permit to expand the dwelling by more than 50%. But the spreadsheets that the building division provided are for new homes, whether they were new lots or teardowns.
And that's, that's great. And so you'll be able to see, you know, before and after in terms of size. Okay, that will be very interesting. Any other questions, comments from board members for Kate? All right. Well, thanks again for doing that. You know, we will continue to try to tackle this. Go ahead. Oh, Matt, you've got your hand up. And actually, yes, if I think this is the, that was the last part of the bylaw discussion we're going to have. So I will open it up to public comment and I will start with Matt Johnson, please.
Sure. Matt Johnson, 21 with 3rd Street is before speaking for myself, even though I'm on the select board. And I just wanted to highlight that that analysis being based upon teardowns. I think that's the appropriate scope, that even though the Florya ratio bylaw does have provisions for major, you know, for renovations and there have been special permits granted when people that are renovating their property have wanted or needed to go over the limit. That really the initial intent of the bylaw was to address the teardown. You know, changes. And so really, while yes, it would be of interest to see what's happening with renovations, I think that it really the big thrust here, what we need to address is is the new construction. So I'm fine with it, just the analysis being that narrowly focused.
Thank you. Matt, when you did yours, was it also expansions?
I had, well, I did this rough cut across all properties over all time. At first, the first round, and then the second round and at town meeting, just looked at new construction since 2000. Because it's really around that time that I think that the major increase in average sizes and houses was was taking place. I mean, there's been this slow increase, but there was a big jump around that time.
All right. Well, thanks. And we appreciate you being available to consult. I mean, we definitely don't want to recreate the wheel because I know so much went into it at the time of and preparing for the bylaw in 2016. So thank you for the historical context. If there is other public comment, please use the raise hand feature and we can call on you. And while we are waiting to see if there's any other public comment, I think the last things are administrative items. Like the minutes. So I see no other no other hands from public comment. So we have two sets of minutes, January 7th and 12th.
And December, the joint meeting with the zoning board of appeals. So you reviewed the minutes, approved them, they go to the board of appeals, they made a couple of minor edits to them. And so they technically have to come back and be reapproved by the planning board as amended by the board of appeals.
Okay, three sets. In our email from Nancy. So we'll start with the December 14 minutes. Does it, do they, do you know what they amended?
I know you were gonna, I knew you were gonna ask me that. And I believe it was it was some clarification, I think it was on page two. At the bottom, Mr. Kinderman said that I think it was a, it was something that he clarified.
Okay.
Yeah, it was a, it was a clarification on one of something that one of the board members had said.
And can we make a motion to accept all three minutes or would you like us to do one at a time?
If if it's, if there are no amendments to any of them, you can you can go through them and see if there's any amendments to the three and approve them all at once or.
Okay. January 7th, did anyone see? Does anyone have any changes to make to the minutes of January 7th? You notice that Matt Johnson, I said, you notice that Matt Johnson has gotten off the line because he would just be biting his tongue right now with like finding typos and whatnot. He's like, I can't look. Okay, how about minutes of January 12? Okay, I'm hearing I'm hearing no amendments. And so if somebody would like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the two January meetings and the minutes of the December meeting as amended by the ZBA.
Kristen, I'll make a motion that the we approve as drafted the the amended minutes of the planning board meeting of December 14th of the joint planning board ZBA meeting of December 14th. The minutes of the January 7th planning board meeting and the minutes of the January 12th planning board meeting.
There are second.
All second.
Nathan seconds. All right, let me go around. Ms. Orbital.
Yes.
Ms. McAdeney.
Yes.
Mr. Bosdat.
Yes.
Mr. Flint.
Yes.
Ms. Miller.
Yes.
And this is Kristen Ferguson. Yes.
Nancy will be so happy.
She's
We love getting minutes done.
That was to say the minutes, I know you guys have been really getting them to us quickly. So thank you.
So the draft minutes for the December 22nd meeting have been finished. And so you will be getting those tomorrow. Those that was the meeting where the board deliberated on the Main Street subdivision. So I'm gonna send those out to board members tomorrow. And if you can look at them, you know, over the next week or so, get comments or edits back to Nancy and myself. Before your next meeting in two weeks, we will send out another revised draft before the meeting, your next meeting.
So can I just ask a process question given that particular meeting and the the notification that was emailed around the appeal, just what the next steps are, which what should we expect as a as a planning board? In terms of timing and all of that sort of thing.
As far as when, when a planning board decision gets appealed, they just gets appealed to land courts and then basically, the whole process gets turned over to town council. And there will be no involvement by board members. The the only time you get into involvement with board members, if an appeal gets to the point where you know, and I'm sure Burton can explain this a little bit better, but it's it's very rare that board members will get involved because your public record is and in this case, many of the meetings, there's all, there's actually videotaped. And then the board has the minutes. So usually, board members are not involved. Town staff may get deposed for an appeal. But the only other time is if this gets to a point where through the appeal, there may be some sort of settlement. The planning board may get input maybe gotten from the planning board. Or if the courts remand the decision back to the planning board for, you know, for their review on a remand from the courts. So but between, you know, now and year or years from now, and the individual board members would not be involved.
Thank you. And I just thought of one other question, given the the potential length of time this could take. Does that put on hold our ability to to bring up any of the the properties that would now be, you know, plots that would be coming up to town meeting next year to be put to the town for purchase? And we basically just on hold until that, that, you know, this is
Yes.
Soon.
Everything is on hold.
Yeah.
During, you know, until it gets through the courts.
And whenever, okay, assuming it, you know, stands as is, does the clock then restart at when that decision is made so that we have three years to potentially purchase those properties from that point? Or does it revert back to three years to the original decision, which would be December for us?
It the the three year time clock does not start until the decision is recorded with the registry of deeds. And and I will actually have to check. It may, it may actually be, it may not be when the decision gets recorded. It may actually be when the definitive plan gets recorded. Because it's not until the plan gets recorded, do those lots actually get created.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
All right. Is there any other administrative business that we need to cover? Any liaison reports or staff updates?
Kristen, just to comment that the community preservation committee finished its deliberations and voted to approve a list of projects to fund in our last meeting. I don't have those in front of me to run through, but that's where things stand. So they'll be present. They've got a a definitive set of things to present to town meeting.
So if you, if the board is interested, I can run through them if you want.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Don't have them in front of me.
But the 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 approved set of projects will be posted to the CPC's webpage tomorrow.
I believe one of which determined tonight's discussion was funding for, set aside for future funding towards affordable housing. So banking money, and I think that was that $200,000 Elizabeth or $225,000, something in that range.
I think it was 233,883.
Something in that ballpark.
We can buy an affordable shed with that.
Yeah, well, it's meant to
No, I'm just kidding.
Seed a fund.
Exactly. Every, I mean, every dollar counts. I mean, we really, it's really important to see, you know, how everybody's searching for the different funding and, and, you know, combining them and things like that. So I, it's it's absolutely necessary. Other, other town staff updates or anything, Elizabeth, that we need to know? All right. All right. Well, thank you, everybody. And we will see everybody. I think when we meet again is next, is that going to be MAPC coming back about throw business? Okay, so so be ready to give input. We've kind of been letting him do all this hard work and not giving a lot of guidance. And have we still not gotten any input from property owners? Like, they're just just not heeding our calls to be involved in this at all. Okay. All right. All right. Well, thanks, everybody. And it's 9:08 and this meeting is adjourned. Have a nice evening.
Night, everyone.